Next on the agenda, we have determinational quorum. Looks like we have a quorum. Everyone is present in the count of four. Comments of council members and special recognition of the resolution.
Mr. President.
Councilman Freeman.
I received a letter from General Buskirk regarding the St. Mary's Childcare Center about putting restrictions on the school, the driving for speeding. And Deputy Chief Bixby is working with me on that, and we found a couple of other things that came into play. And also, I wanted to know the follow-up for the Department of Public Works, the drainage situation that was in Esquire Plaza. There are some businesses on the front part of the plaza where the Jack's Pizza, the Allstate Insurance Company, and on the back part of that, it floods, and it floods all the way up to their porch. That's it.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Council Jones.
I said one thing. I was on the Citizens Nextdoor app and Neighbor, and I noticed that a gentleman was on there complaining about that he had been missing his sign at McCord Lane in Old Orchard for approximately 10 months. I ended up contacting this gentleman, and he was very frustrated. It seemed like he had tried to contact everyone he could and couldn't get anywhere. So I ended up contacting Mr. Lott, and the sign was printed on October 26th. It still has not been put up. I had contacted him again today, and he said he's just too busy to do it at this point. It'd be nice if we could get that sign up, because, you know, if the police or firemen were to go out there and there's no sign at all, it could be a liability issue or someone could get hurt. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Approval of minutes, a regular meeting of October 2nd, 2017, and October 18th, 2017. There are motion on the floor to approve the minutes of those meetings. Motion by Council Wheeler. Second? Anyone?
I'll second.
Second by Council Parker. Any discussion? All in favor of approval? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Pardon me if I'm sniffling. I'm sure a lot of us are probably in that hole right now sniffing a little bit. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. There are motion on the floor to pay the bills.
Motion.
Motion, Council Chavis. Second?
Second.
Second, Council Wheeler. Any discussion? All in favor, by a show of hands. Pay the bills. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Report of committees. Code.
Yeah, so we met last Thursday in regards to proposal number 21 that we'll be voting on here shortly, and it passed unanimously through committee to approve to full council.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Unfinished business.
Proposal number 21, 2017, introduced by Council Williams. A proposal for an ordinance submitting the code to establish an all-way stop intersection at Bearsdale Drive and Rose Haven Drive.
There are motion on the floor for approval of proposal number 21.
Motion.
Motion by Council Weir. Second by Council Parker. Any discussion? All in favor, by a show of hand. Proposal 21. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. New business. Resolution number 8, 2017.
Resolution 8, number 2017, introduced by Council Freeman. A resolution selecting the Perfection Group as a qualified provider of energy conservation measures for the city of Lawrence, Indiana, and authorizing the Energy Savings Committee to take all actions necessary to develop a guaranteed energy savings contract proposal and related financing arrangements.
So this is a resolution number 8. Is there a motion on the floor for approval? Resolution number 8.
Motion.
Motion, Council Freeman. It's a resolution. It's not ordinance. So we can move on it.
Sorry.
Second, Council Wheeler. Any discussion? Go ahead, Council Chevlot.
I'm just curious. I know this was addressed a couple of years ago, but has this been put out to bid, which in the last 12 months, because a lot has changed, where we typically take the lowest bidder, so this hasn't even been...
Okay. Council Freeman, you have any comments?
I don't believe that... We just picked up where we left off.
We have a council, our council, council would like to speak to that.
Okay.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Here's what I know about where we are, because obviously I was around, so I'm kind of knowing on the representations and others. First, I'll note that the guaranteed energy savings statute that the bid was issued under was really a request for proposals. And that guaranteed energy savings statute is an exception to the normal process for bidding that most cities go under. And the reason that it's an exception is because, under that same law, whoever the provider is, has to provide a guarantee to the city that the, essentially, the savings that they represent, this project will present for the city, are actually going to come to fruition. And if they do not, then that guaranteed provider has to put money forward to pay the city back for any difference. So lowest cost bid, which is normally required for every other type of project you would do, is not required under that statute. That said, that doesn't mean that whatever project scope the committee decides on, you know, what that scope's going to be, what the cost is going to be, this allows you to kind of refresh, have the committee look at it again and talk to this provider, but whether you go forward and how you go forward, it's got to come back to the council.
Understand. Understand. Yeah, I was familiar...
And so there's no expiration date.
I understand. Yeah, but the reason why it didn't pass the last time is because this was the only bidder that had the opportunity to be able to have a longer period of time to go through every city building. The other two bidders chose not to because they did not feel that they had the same level of access to all the buildings that this particular company did, which is why it failed. So I'm just curious, are we going to go back through that process, open it back up, to allow other bidders to have the same opportunity to go through every building and do that energy audit savings analysis? Because the analysis that this particular company did had a six-month lead that the others didn't.
Six-month lead?
Yes, sir. They were in every building. They had... Yes, sir.
So from the time that that happened to now, the other two companies didn't have the opportunity?
That is correct. This particular company was in all of our facilities six months prior than the other two companies that were intending to bid, but once they realized that this particular company had six months more time to be able to go and to look at every single building and do the energy audit, the other two pulled out. And that's why the previous council voted against this, is because we didn't feel it was fair and equitable.
Okay, so if the other two companies pulled out, that's their priority?
If they didn't pull out, they didn't even...
Well, that's what the words you use, is what I'm getting at, is you use the words "pull out," so...
Because they didn't feel it was fair and equitable.
I can't speak for those companies.
Understand.
But right now, we need to move forward in our city.
You just asked, I'm just asking a question if...
Yeah. Yeah. No comments from, right now, we are in discussion as a council. Okay. So, any further discussion?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if I can speak to that, I think, again, this is a resolution to essentially identify that, A, Council Freeman would like to know that the Perfection Group should be a contender into the process, but also authorizing us just to move forward. Because if I'm incorrect, please let me know, but we have made zero progress with energy savings in the past year. Or if we have, it hasn't been shared with the council, and to me, that is unacceptable because that's money the city can have that we're losing. So I think the purpose of this resolution is to make that aware and kind of rev everybody's engines up to make this a priority. So again, if you look at it, it's authorizing the Energy Savings Committee to take necessary steps to move forward. So I think that's kind of the point of this resolution right now, is to say, hey, this is a company that we want to look at, but as well, we just need to move forward and jump. So I kind of want to make that clarification, that it's just a resolution, a recommendation to move forward on a project that has been at a standstill.
I agree.
Thank you.
Council Wells.
Yes, Mr. President. I've done a little bit of research on this, and what I found was, it looks to be that this was, in fact, the very same proposal, and it was being, basically, it's all the very same. It was the same author, the same proposal, the same company, and it was introduced as proposal number two of 2015 in February, and then it was not adopted in March of 18. And it failed by a 7 to 2 vote. So with what Council Chevlot was saying, you know, you'd made the comment that, well, they had all this time, but they didn't, because it failed on, in March of 2015, there wasn't any point in any other company or contractor going forward with it, because it was a done deal. It had failed then. So with that being said, I too, you know, I have concerns with the fact that these three votes, well, it's got, it's got three different company names here that supposedly submitted quotes on this, but then apparently, according to Council Chevlot, that isn't the case. We just got one, we just got one quote.
That's not true.
Council Giles. Are you done, Council Wells? I'm sorry.
Yes. Thank you.
I have a kind of a twofold comment. At the time, back in 2017, when Energy Savings was brought back up, at that time, I was on the committee, but I would like to say for the record, I'm no longer on that committee, but at the time I was. I actually, there was proposals, there was a RFP put out, and there was proposals submitted by all of these companies. I actually read all of the proposals from Perfection Group, Emmeresco, there was a company out of Evansville that was a subsidiary of...
Vectren.
Vectren, yeah, that all, that all submitted at that time. And so, really, you know, the truth of it was, is that the committee met on those, we opened up those RFPs, they were given out to, to the committee members at that time. We were at a, we had a problem, I know, I, let me just say, I personally had an issue with the process that it was a, it wasn't a request for proposal, it was a request for qualifications, which at the time, I had a problem with because everybody was qualified. So when you, when you, when you choose it, you were, to me, it was like you were just kind of just choosing whomever you felt most comfortable, you know, just most comfortable, because all the companies, I think, are reputable companies that have done a lot of work throughout the, without, throughout the state, regionally, and even nationally, and they, I feel like all of them were capable of doing the work. So what I wanted at the time was an RFP. And so I think there was some debate between some of the committee members and the administration on which was the right way to go. With that debate, it stalled, and nothing else really happened from that point up until I just received, as many of the other councilmen did, this resolution that Councilman Williams is a sponsor of. And so then I have revisited, because of that, receiving that, I have revisited, looking at those, at the information that, that I have. I think the question that I have a little problem with this resolution is the request for qualifications or the request for proposal, that issue has not been really vetted or decided upon. And so, really, looking at this resolution, I'm under the assumption that the request for qualification is the way that we're going, and with that being said, this resolution is just choose that the sponsors asking us to basically choose Perfection Group based on, on the qualifications. Am I, is my, I mean, maybe the council can, I mean, the council can, am I thought process off there, or...
I think you're correct. A request for proposals is not what's required under this statute. A request for qualifications is what the term the statute uses, finding a qualified provider.
Right.
So I understand that there was some confusion at the time. That's pretty common, because this is such a different process than the normal RFP process that a city... But all that's required is that you ask for the qualifications and you choose a provider. You don't have to have a lowest cost bid. You're allowed to talk to people before and during the process. It's just a much more flexible process, and one can argue whether that's appropriate or not, but that's the way the General Assembly set it up. And you are correct that the state of Indiana, the Department of Energy Development, actually pre-qualifies and has a list of bidders, and there's only, I think, about 10 that are on the state's list that meet all the qualifications, and these three bidders are among those 10.
Right. So my question, I guess, before I vote on this, what I need clarity in is, when I listened to Council Wheeler's statement, I'm okay with that, but when I read the actual title of the resolution, it concerns me because it says, "A resolution selecting Perfection Group as the qualified provider of energy conservation measures for the city of Lawrence and authorizing Energy Saving Committee to take all actions necessary to develop a guaranteed energy saving contract proposal and related financing agreement." So I guess my question is, is it still open that, I'm not on this committee, but once this committee meets, will this committee have the ability to choose another provider if it seems fit out of these three or four that have submitted? Or is by voting, voting for this, am I saying that Perfection Group is the one that we're choosing?
Well, it's saying it's the qualified provider that you're going to move forward with in contract negotiations, which is the next step in the process.
So, but I mean, it is perfection.
Does the committee reopen this process and do it all over again? Yes, but that wasn't my understanding of what the sponsor wanted to do.
Right.
With the resolution. They wanted to pick somebody to move forward.
So the intent is, with, if I vote yes for this, the intent of this is, we are choosing Perfection to move forward with. Okay. That's what, I, thank you.
This isn't the first time that we visit this. We, we already been down this road. Any further discussion at this time?
Mr. President.
Council Wells.
Would it be totally inappropriate to suggest, because of the fact that this has failed, this looks to be the very same proposal, that it has failed previous council by, you know, what, a 7 to 2 vote, that the providers, because the providers that supposedly were named here, whether they gave us a proposal or not, they may not even still be in business, they may not be interested at this point. But I, I have a problem with resolution 8 by the fact that it does state one company, one company only. And Council Giles makes a good point, because that's how I read proposal 8, too, was that the Energy Savings Committee would have the, you know, would have the final say on this. It doesn't say anything about it going back to full council, which I'm, I was, you know, believing or sure that that would be the case, but doesn't, you know, the wording of it doesn't say that.
I do want to, if I have one other thing, but what I was kind of going to with the RFQ, with the RFQ process, what I struggled with it was, you just kind of select one, because they're all kind of, they're all qualified, so you just kind of select one. The only, when I read the different proposals, yes, some of them suggested that they could do different things than the other, but if I understand this correctly, the committee builds what they want to be done. So even if we don't vote on resolution 8 today, and we put everybody's name in this title, once it goes back to committee, you're still just kind of choosing someone, because they're all quali, they're all qualified. I mean, if I'm having the right understanding.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So the motion on the floor has been first and second. Any further discussion at this time? All in favor, by a show of hands, to move on resolution, or approval of resolution number 8, by a show of hands. Keep your hands up for it just a second. All opposed? Any abstaining, or...
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining. One abstaining. Motion carries. So, next on the agenda, we have comments of administration. But before that happens, let me acknowledge that we have some, some dignitaries in our, our midst at this time, and I'd like to acknowledge State Representative John Bartlett. Thank you, sir, for attending the meeting tonight, and we have, looks like, oh, we have a small claims court judge. I appreciate, thanks for coming tonight, Kim Bacon. So we better be on our Ps and Qs tonight. Okay. So let me, before you come up, Mayor, let me say a couple of things. All right, pursuant to the council rules, presentations to the council are to be cleared to the president five days in advance of the meeting and adding, and to be added to the agenda, so that the public is noticed, that is on public notice regarding what issues are to be heard by the council. And today, the only thing we have on the agenda are the general comments of, from the mayor. So with that, with, so with that, will be heard today. If the administration would like to make any presentations at the next council meeting, please let us know by Wednesday, November the 8th. Now, with that also being said, I'm not opposed to comments being made from the administration as well as departmental heads. So with that, with that statement being said, presentation, give us a heads up. Comments, I'm okay with. Is that fair? That's fair. Okay. Now, let me also say this. Over the last several months, various council members have asked to be informed regarding the status of new police station and/or projects within the city, and the administration has, has not done so. So, Mayor, you provided information publicly this afternoon for the first time in a news conference. In most other communities, we see the mayor keeping the council, the city councils informed regarding major public works project. Now, the administration want quick approval of bond issues related to the project. Now, we all know that that's why many people are here tonight, that is of concern. And so, when it, when it has been working on the project and keeping information to itself for at least a year, now, we, look, I think everyone here on the, on the council have demonstrated up to this point, our support for our public safety. That is unquestionable. But we have been left out of the information going forward, and that's not fair. If you work on a project, no matter what the scale is, as a city, the administration, you have multiple months, if not years, working or to discuss or even work on this project. It's not fair that the council only have a month or so to digest this, to make a decision, when there's a multi-million dollar project in discussion. So with that being said, let me be absolutely clear. We would not be rushed in this process. We're going to take as much time as we need to make informed decisions that impact this city going forward. And let me be absolutely clear on that. The timeframe that has been presented, that may not happen as, as scheduled, because I would not move on anything until I'm absolutely clear, so I can make an informed decision. It has nothing to do with public safety whatsoever. Our city have many other issues that are, that need our attention, and if we have the opportunity any kind of way, whether it's through bonds or any other means of financial support to get it done, then we need to consider all avenues. Secondly, I don't know the vision of the mayor at this point. I don't know your vision. I don't know what direction you're going in. And as a representative of District 4 in our city, there are many concerns that my constituents have. And when we present those, when I present those concerns and things don't happen, then I have a serious problem with that, especially when we have the means to make it happen. So going forward, at this point, we support our police department. The council is not a rubber stamp. As the physical and legislative arm of the local government, we would do our due diligence and find out what we need to know about this project before moving forward and making any funding decisions to incur, in addition to a $12.9 million in debt for the city or more.
I have to tell you, counsel, I'm not really sure how to answer your statements in there, because it was administrative comments, and it seemed like that you were concerned at what I was going to do up here. I think we've made every possible effort to get the council informed on this police station. We've met individually with councilors and gone over the plans for the police station. The fact that we were intending to build a police station certainly hasn't been a secret. That information's been out there for well over a year. Those are public RFPs that are issued, so it's not a secret to anybody when the city intends to do a major project. I'm not really sure what other avenue we could take unless you were wanting to be in every aspect of the planning, and I'm, even I'm not in on all that. The RFPs were issued and received, they were scaled, they were graded, and then we determined a vendor. Once that vendor was determined, there was a series of meetings that took place between myself and perhaps more meetings between the police department and members of Chief Hoffman's staff, who were far more qualified in deciding what needed to go in the police station and what didn't need to go in the police station. My primary focus was to determine and to decide, and I decided a long time ago, that we, in fact, needed a dedicated police station in the city of Lawrence. That need was clear and present. I know that Chief Hoffman has met with every counselor and spent time with every counselor up here and gone over the plans for the police station. Our intent today was simply to make a public announcement, a pronouncement, to give you, to give you as a council, until the mid-month meeting, to look over those plans and determine what questions you may or may not have in there. I don't frankly know any other way to do this, and I don't know whether you're asking to be involved in every decision being made by the city, by...
First of all, let's be absolutely clear. Chief Hoffman met with multiple council members just last week.
Yes.
Just last week. Okay? So you're saying from last week, the first time that you presented anything to us councilors to today, that everything, that's more than enough time? Second of all-
We are not asking you to make a decision tonight.
Okay, but, but you're trying to press us to make a decision because you just said you've given us until the mid-month, which is next week, to, to, for you to present a resolution. That's not enough time, Mayor. I'm just here to tell you. Just continue with your comments.
Present a resolution?
You, you want to present something next week to the council?
Well, want a proposal, resolution, yes.
Okay, so that's my whole point. You're saying that you want to present something to us and we only just really just had, that's a what, a week and a half?
Repeat, we are not asking you to vote on anything.
Okay, so you're asking us to consider something. So we're gonna take our time as, like I said in my comments-
Well, you should.
Before, and we will. Believe you me, we will. If it be entertained at all on the agenda at this point, because there are multiple questions, like I expressed to the chief, that there may, councilors may have. But we're not gonna get into that tonight. I just simply addressed your concerns of, or questions, it's not really a question, it was a statement to let you know. Also, when it comes to multi-mega-million dollars of money being spent by this city, we are this legislative branch. We should be included in those decision-making process. So wherever that, whenever those decisions, you decide that there's a major project to be considered or you want to do, I think out of courtesy and respect that we should be involved with it. When you say that, that, that the police department are the foremost experts, you have two retired police officers sitting on this council and I being one. So I have a great deal in knowledge and understanding of what needs to go into a police department going forward. So at this point, I'm just addressing those two concerns that you had. So when we move, as we move forward, Chief, and you, and you and I have already talked about this, it's not that we are against it, it's about the process and being physically responsible for the financing of this project. And tonight is not the night because I wanted you to go ahead and make your comments as we going forward and then we will proceed as necessary down the road.
Didn't mean to get everybody's fur flying. First of all, I want to thank you all for taking the time to meet with me last week. I understand with the, with only two exceptions, you all cleared your calendar for me. You came in on your own time, you sat down, wherever you stand on the initial idea of a police station, every one of you without exception was open-minded, respectful, and you listened to some of the information that I provided. I understand Counselor Jones was out of state last week and Counselor Giles had a family emergency, but with those two exceptions, you all made time for me and I thank you for that. Counselor Parker even shared her lunch hour with me, ma'am, thank you very much for that. So my purpose here tonight is not to seek any votes or approvals or anything like that. I just wanted to provide information, kind of recap some of the things that we said today in our press conference, that we are not building a police station, that we are bringing to you a proposal that we think is something that answers all of your questions and then you, you all can decide whether or not this is the best use of our taxpayers' dollars and our funding mechanisms that we are proposing. So we're not trying to rush anybody and I didn't mean to exclude anybody from this very lengthy process. We've been working it all, on it all year long. But what I've found in this process is that there has to be some degree of confidentiality and in the process of bringing a proposal to you, if, if we announce every step of the way, everything that we're doing, we could compromise some of the, some of the savings that we were expected to, to gain from this. For example, land acquisition. If it was made apparent and everybody knew that we were trying to buy land for a police station, then sometimes the value of that land skyrockets, doubles, sometimes triples. So we had to play that a little close to the vest. But I think I'm here before you tonight with, again, a proposal that you are more than welcome to say no to and I'm, all I'm doing is announcing to you all and to the community that at the next mid-month meeting, we will be bringing to you a resolution. And then you will have whatever time you need until, until you vote on it. So that's, that's all I, I wanted to, to say. And I've got, I've got some basic information. That's my goal here tonight, is to share information with you. Counselor Giles and Counselor Jones may not be as familiar with this as the others because as I said, they were not present for the individual meetings, but I do applaud both of them because they were both at the press conference today where we announced our intention to make this proposal. So if I'm okay, I don't want to upset anybody, but I'll be happy to just make, make, for, for not only those in attendance here tonight, for you all, but all those who may be viewing at home or see it on YouTube later.
If you have the floor.
What is it that we're talking about?
We have the floor.
So with that said, I'll, and this is not a big presentation, it's just kind of some facts about what, what is it that everybody's talking about here? And the basic, my opinion and that of the police department is that we are in need of a police station. In 2009, going back, structural deficiencies at the prior facility caused us to temporarily move into this beautiful government center. No doubt about it.
Chief?
Yes.
Um, I don't know where we stand, but I know that you have these packets. Do you want me to pass those out?
Sure, pass those out, that'd be great, if that's okay. If not, then-
Go ahead, Counselor Jones.
Thank you for bringing that up.
No. So that, that previous police station was flooding and as many of you know, we, we kind of hastily moved in here under rushed situations. We actually displaced some of the other township offices that were here. So we are in need, our officers are in need of a facility that is designed and intended to be a police operation. A new police station will allow our police department to serve the community in the most effective, efficient, community-oriented manner. You're gonna hear that word a lot, "community." I hope nobody snickers at that. A new police station will provide a safer, more secure environment for our law enforcement officers and the public. What we're looking at after analyzing many sites, and we can get into all the questions of why this site, but we're looking at a parcel of land on North Post Road that is in dire need of redevelopment. It's the 5100 blocks, specifically 5150 North Post Road. It's an ideal location from a law, law enforcement perspective because it's, it's a lot closer to where our police runs originate and will hopefully reduce some of our, our response times. The police, the development of a police station in this site will, will not only improve my ability and my officers and detectives' ability to fight crime, but will hopefully lead to economic redevelopment in that area. So you mentioned the total cost of the land purchase, the development, constructions, furnishings. We were kind of saying between 12 and 14 million because we don't have any hard, fast numbers. We don't know the cost of, the exact cost of materials and labor. Some unknowns, of course, our project, massive project this size, but it will result in a 37, almost a 37,000 square foot, two-story police station with a fully-equipped basement, a Sally Port, a 2,000-square-foot detached police vehicle storage garage. That's where we can keep our motorcycles, our SWAT vehicle. Roughly 150 parking spaces and a secure lot for officers and on the front side of that, maybe 50 spots or so for the, for the community, for, for the public. Not to mention a 112-person community room, which can be doubled as a training room for officers, and an exterior training track, a running track, which will be available to the public in that neighborhood. A lot of people say, wow, that's, that's a ton of money. I can't even wrap my head around 12.9 million dollars or between 12 and 14. Can we afford it? Well, the answer, the short answer is yes. The city will not have to seek a tax increase to fund this new police station. The city will be able to fund the new police station within the existing tax rate and funding that will be used for the police station does not impact the control tax levy. Now, these are very complicated terms and thoughts that Controller Fenwick can really expand upon in depth. This is not a, that deep of a presentation tonight, this is just general information. For the project, the city's going to enter into a contract to build a new police station for a fixed price and this is going to eliminate the city's risk of cost overruns or unanticipated costs at the end. So finally, the police station is going to allow for a consolidation of city services in a thoughtful way. Most importantly, the 911 communication center, which is currently in a separate facility, will be combined with the police operations in the new station. It just makes sense. The proposal also includes funding improvements to create really a one-stop-shop here in this building, bring the utilities back in, so when the police move out, utilities can come back in. So we have utilities, DPW, mayor's office. This will be the one place of Lawrence government. So this will allow residents to come here for all of their non-police needs and of course, any police-related activity will go on at 5150. So why the need? We really didn't have space when we moved in here and we don't have space now, it's only gotten worse. We have one small interview room with thin walls and because it wasn't designed to be an interview room, it isn't really equipped and it's not laid out the way we would like it to be, the way most police departments are set. In fact, an example, a suspect may have to walk right past the same recording devices that are going to be used to video and audio record that suspect, which could put him, you know, and may close the doors, right? We have definitely outgrown this temporary location. Our property room where evidence is stored is becoming smaller and smaller every day. We're doing our best to purge evidence that's not needed in, in courtroom testimony or any civil suits, but some stuff we just have to hang on to for a really long time and it just keeps coming in quicker than it's going out. So we have inadequate space for storing equipment, radios, uniforms, K-9 supplies. We have no storage space whatsoever for our honor guard, crime watch supplies or the, our partners at the FOP. We're constantly borrowing space. Our 911 center, as I mentioned, is located in a different facility that's also really inadequate. We're always making upgrades to that. And that's kind of important to note because we are, in the 12th largest city in the United States, we are a backup location for fire, police, and EMS dispatching. So if something happens in Indianapolis, tornado, terrorist threat, it's us. It's us for a while at least, until they get up on their feet. So I, I just can't overstate the value of having our 911 center in a secure, underground location. And yesterday's tornadoes in Muncie are probably the nearest, closest thing you can think of, of why we need to have our 911 underground and a, and a safe place. The mayor mentioned earlier today that the department has been making do with the situation for a long time and over the past year, we conducted a feasibility study, gathered input from officers, and evaluated best practices and national standards and we're trying to bring them to Lawrence in the form of a modern police station. It's not some Taj Mahal. We're not trying to build a Carmel police station or LAPD or all this fancy stuff. We just want basic needs for our police department. As a result, we're going to make this proposal in the form of a resolution at the next mid-month council meeting and we're just making that announcement tonight. So this is going to be a location to not only for our officers to kind of call home as a place to work, but also as a place to interact with the members of the community that we serve. The proposed station will be safer and more secure for officers and the public and really think back to last summer when IMPD's police headquarters got shot up on the Northwest District and the North District and it happened again this summer on the North District with IMPD. The need for a, a safe place for officers and civilians to work, it can't be argued. It's not, it's not some war, war movie. This is real-life stuff. So the proposed station will provide us with the space we need. It'll give us a workspace that's flexible and expandable. We're not building it necessarily for 2017's needs, we're thinking about 2037. And what's the city and what's this police department gonna look like then? It's my goal right now that as we design this, we're not moving in on day one already anticipating having to move out in 20 years. We want this to be, we want it to grow with our communicate, with our community. Like, and I'm, I'm soon to wrap up, so please bear with me. Like most police stations, we're finally going to have a dedicated roll-call room, multiple interview rooms for suspect interrogations, a room for arrestees who are under the influence of drug or alcohol that sometimes they regurgitate, sometimes they defecate and the way, the way we're set up now, that's in the same room where officers eat their lunch. We will have a dedicated office for command staff personnel, supervisors, detectives, and our awesome community prosecutor. And for the training officer, imagine the, how difficult it is to schedule training for an agency our size and, and be located off-site, which is, is what we're doing right now. We'll have an evidence property room with much more capacity, designated spaces for particularly sensitive items such as evidence regarding firearms, drugs, electronics, and unfortunately homicide. Now homicide evidence must be kept forever. It doesn't go away. It's one way in and no way out. And I'll tell you, just knock on wood, one of the, I mean, we, we're not really affected too much right now in the city of Lawrence and hopefully that trend continues because of the great crime-fighting efforts we have. We're gonna have storage space and office space for professional standards, internal affairs, the honor guard, the FOP. We have more than 50 police explorers, young men and women ages 14 to 21 and their advisors. So they need space too and we just don't have space for them right now. Some of our explorer training occurs at an off-site business in Castleton because we just don't have room for them. This will definitely change that. So a building that is designed specifically for police functions will ease communications, collaboration between the divisions within the department, improve the security during the transfer of prisoners from police cars to paddy wagons to interview rooms. We're going to increase access to the public and promote community engagement with this building. We're going to safeguard confidentiality and, and privacy during interactions between the police and citizens that we serve. A lot of times, we've got our, our front desk here in the building, people come in to report crimes and somebody could be standing in line behind them. So we want to, we want to kind of dial down on that and make it, make it, you know, a modern police facility. I mentioned the outdoor running track. This building will also have a fitness room for our officers, locker room, some showers so that they can have the equipment to maintain the physical fitness and readiness for the jobs that they do. The mayor mentioned the transformative nature of this proposed location on Post Road. I couldn't agree more. In your packets, I believe there's some photographs of what it looks like now. It's, it's just an ugly little stretch of Post Road that thousands of people, not only internally, not only Lawrence residents, but people from outside our community drive by that site and they make their judgments on what kind of community is this based on that. I would love to bulldoze all that and put up a, a beautiful facility that I think you have pictures of. I've already spoken to some of the property managers and residents in that area and it won't come as any shock to you, it shouldn't, that not only are they supportive, but they're actually excited about having police officers in the neighborhood as next-door neighbors. In closing, I just want to reiterate how important this resolution is gonna be next Wednesday. I know, I know you all, you're gonna give it your due diligence. If you need more time, take more time. But tonight is just my announcement that we intend to, to give you the resolution and I and my command staff and I know the administration, we are willing and we, we can't wait to answer all of your very specific questions. It's, no one's intent to rush you through this process. So the building, getting back to a couple of other points and then I'll, I'll wrap up here in about 30 seconds. The building is going to enhance my ability and my department's ability to really embrace and enhance the community policing model that we, that we strive for every day. It's gonna balance an open, community-welcoming feel that we want, but also make us resilient to some crackpot with a rifle that wants to put rounds into our officers or the, the buildings, the building where they work. You'll notice in some of the plans, I think I've discussed with you individually, that the operations section of the building is kind of on the backside and that was by design. So most importantly, you know, this is gonna provide safety to those who provide safety for the, the citizens in Lawrence. And it's just gonna equip our officers and staff with the, finally, the resources that they need to continue to serve the public in the most honorable and professional way. And I'll just close by saying that I, I will humbly seek your approval for this in a respectful manner and I, I hope you're with us. Again, it's, you, you all have a great responsibility of balancing the needs of your constituents, the wants and desires of your constituents. You have to, Counselor, or I'm sorry, President Williams, you told me the other day, it's about priorities. And what, what do your constituents consider a priority in this city? So that's, that's for you all to decide. All I can do is bring you this proposal. I wanted, I wanted it to be as thorough and well-thought-out as possible so that I would be able to answer all your questions. I could have come before you in July of this year or maybe even May or, you know, earlier in the year and I wouldn't have been able to answer anything. I wanted it to be as thorough and well-thought-out as possible so that I would be able to answer all your questions. I could have come before you in July of this year, or maybe even May, or, you know, earlier in the year, and I wouldn't have been able to answer anything. We didn't know where it was going to be, what it was going to look like, how many square foot, what the, I mean, we didn't know anything. We've been working, chipping away at this all summer long, so I would have been totally ill-equipped to come to you with any kind of meaningful information, and I think we're to the point now, we don't know the answers to all the questions. Counselor Chavis asked some great questions about the ongoing maintenance. You know, once they hand the keys over to us, how are we going to afford to pay for it? This is a big building that requires heating and air conditioning and water and mowing the grass and maintenance, and so we're looking into that, by the way. I've got some numbers for you soon, but, so, I don't have every answer for you right now, certainly, but we are real, we're much closer now. So, I apologize if anybody sitting before me, sitting behind me, or sitting at home feels left out, not the intention, but in order to bring, for me to bring you this product, we had to kind of follow this process along the way. So, I'll answer any questions you may have now, or maybe now's not the time for specifics.
That's where I'm going now, but I appreciate your comments, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. You're done?
Oh, no. I'm sorry, did you say...
I wasn't sure if you were done or not.
Oh, I'm wrapped up, and I remain at your service for any questions or comments or concerns.
Yeah, we'll move forward. I appreciate you, Chief. No problem.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, am I done?
Dismissed.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Oh, man, I told you, Chief of Police dismissed. Ah, no. Okay. Counselors, we'll deal with this as time goes on. We will have ample opportunity to ask questions, and I'm sure we love us already preparing and preparing even more. We will have time.
President.
Mr. President?
Oh, Counselor Wells.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank you for your comments of earlier. I thought this was going a little bit too fast myself, and I just hope that we can include our citizens with comments before we make any vote, whether it be a resolution or whatever, whatever we do. You know, I just heard about this just last week, and as, you know, we all did, and I, you know, because it was going so fast, because of the timeline, the, you know, the meeting that we went to today, they were talking about breaking ground in January or February, and unless I misunderstood, but that's what I thought I heard, and so, I mean, it seems awfully fast, and I, but I would definitely would just urge that we include our citizens and value their opinions because I know all the people I talked to definitely had something to say about it. But, once again, I appreciate you putting the handle on it for just a little bit and slowing it down.
Thank you, sir. All right. Citizen comments. First on the list, we have Brian McHenry.
I'm going to pass.
You want to pass? Okay. Brian wants to pass. Next on the list, we have Rachel Thompson. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Rachel Thompson, I live at 4701 Van Cleve Street.
Okay.
I just wanted to come and tell you guys that I think Lawrence needs another animal shelter. I have four pets of my own, three of which are strays that have come from here. In the last four months, I've picked up six dogs running around Lawrence. Thankfully, I found all of their owners except one. Only one had a microchip, none of the rest did, no collars, anything, and it just takes a lot of time and money to be able to keep these dogs. Some of them I had to keep for weeks until I was able to find their owners, and I know, I mean, I could have just looked the other way like so many other people do, but what kind of a person would that make me? That's not right, and I just do for them what I hope someone would do for mine, and I just think, I just think that's something that we need. I mean, there's animals running loose every day, the winter months are upon us, there's tons of strays out there right now, I'm feeding and providing shelter for three stray cats in my neighborhood as well, and it's just, it's just every day, every day, I see a loose dog somewhere or, you know, a dead animal somewhere that takes forever to be picked up because I think if we had a shelter that had volunteers, it might get done a little faster. I mean, I know, or just, you know, why does it really matter, but it's just still awful to have to drive by and see something like that. So, yeah, that's all I have to really say about that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President? If I may, I just wanted to applaud you and thank you for your efforts because I do, I am fully aware of your efforts, and this young lady is just a private citizen, and, you know, she is, went way beyond the call of duty when it comes to, you know, her love for dogs and cats, and my understanding was one dog that she rescued and found the home for, or found the owner, the dog had actually been on the loose for over a year, and the dog, I believe, had a microchip, is that right? That's how you found the owner, was through a microchip? And, but, once again, I just wanted to applaud, you know, your efforts, and I think that, you know, I know that there's many, many, many people that have got the same love that you have, maybe not quite the persistence that you have, but there was a lot of, that definitely have a great admiration and love for, you know, the dogs and the cats, and I would like to say to you that I am looking into the possibility of a shelter, a private shelter. I mean, if we found out that trying to get it done through government's not going to work, and so, we, so I think we're looking into doing it, you know, with the private donations and the different rescue groups, so I just tell everybody that, you know, was in belief that we were to have a shelter and then got it yanked out from under us, that it's not totally dead yet. We, it won't be of any magnitude size, but, you know, you done saved six animals and you done that with your own home, so it's just proven we don't need, we don't need anything monstrously big, we just need people like you that care, and once again, I thank you for your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have adjournment. We are adjourned.